Apologies, I have a little cough, but we're with you tonight. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other members to our schools. These procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. Webinar ID is 872-2550-4103, and the required password is 195108. Okay, call the meeting to order. Mr. Bleeker will call, please.
Dr. Park.
Here.
Ms. Secon.
Here.
Ms. Davenaro.
Here.
Mr. De Sola.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Kizmarski.
Here.
And Dr. Morty.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on October 18th, 2023, in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. Copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Salute to the flag. Dr. Park, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will not require an executive session today in the beginning of our meeting, so let us go on to number nine, appointment of the superintendent of schools. I have to open the floor because we have a hearing. All right, so we're going on actually to number seven, all right, which is motion to open the meeting to the public. This is specific to the hearing on the superintendent's contract. Mr. Kizmarski, and seconded by Mr. Gallo. All right, so at this time and pursuant to NJAC, members of the public may ask questions or make comments regarding a new employment contract between the Mawa Board of Education and Dr. Michael Di Toro. All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no one coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Now, Mr. Bleeker, we're voting on this separately, this appointment.
Correct.
Okay. So I just actually wanted to share something before we take this vote because I was not at the previous meeting when this was discussed. So we're actually voting today, it's on today's agenda, for the appointment of the superintendent of schools and the new employment contract retroactive to July 1st, 2023. So I just wanted to make a statement, actually. I've known Dr. Di Toro since he began in this district as principal of JK. My daughter actually started in the fourth grade, and he was a first-time principal there. At that time, I was president of the Mawa Schools Foundation and worked with him in fundraising and grant writing and awards of grants. I then worked more closely with him when he served as director of curriculum and instruction, and at that time I was a member of the Board of Education and I was on that committee. And then I've also served as chairperson of the committee and worked with him. Recently, in the last two years, I've worked very closely with Dr. Di Toro as board president while he's been in the position of superintendent. That involves a lot of phone calls, a lot of contact. My, Dr. Di Toro, I talk actually quite often. Dr. Di Toro is energetic, supportive, a strong leader, good collaborator, and is very strongly committed to the Mawa schools and promoting excellence in our schools and with our students. His first priority is always the student and what's in their best interests. He is a good listener and well-respected by his staff and administrative team. I'm very excited about this new contract. I think it's a win-win for the Board of Education here and Dr. Di Toro, and I think we're going to retain a very highly regarded and respected superintendent here, and I think his leadership is going to provide us with a great deal of stability, security, and the continuation of achieving our goals from the strategic plan. So I'm very proud that we could come to this conclusion, and I'm delighted that Dr. Di Toro has committed to stay with us for five additional years. Thank you. All right, so let's vote on the appointment of the superintendent of schools. I need a motion, I think. Mr. Kizmarski and Mr. Gallo. Any other comments from board members before we proceed? Okay. All right, Mr. Bleeker.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Secon.
Yes.
Ms. Davenaro.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, an enthusiastic yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski.
A hundred times yes.
And Dr. Morty.
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Di Toro. Thank you. You sure you want this? It's done now, too late now. All right, agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions and new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, we were asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. All right, another motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. Denise. All right, we are officially open to the public. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, let's, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Hughes, and seconded by Ms. Secon. All right, our newly duly superintendent's report, Dr. Di Toro.
Thank you. Just before I get started, I just wanted to say how much I'm very grateful to serve as superintendent here in Mawa. Mawa is an extremely special place. We're very proud of the work that we've done collectively, and I'm so glad the administrative team is here because it's a ton of work for them, a ton of work for the teachers, and as a collective group, we've done some pretty incredible things, and I'm really excited about the things to come, so thank you very much for the opportunity. As it pertains to my report, as I shared at the last board meeting, we are going to be doing our equity audit during the November 15th meeting because this state has required us to do our testing presentation today. So again, our equity audit will happen November 15th, and we're going to be doing our testing presentation today. So I'd like to introduce our testing coordinators, Ms. Danielle Polway and Mr. Dennis Jarvis, who's going to be sharing information from a number of different assessments.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to present the district testing results for the New Jersey SLA and the DLM, which were administered in the spring of 2023. My name is Dennis Jarvis, and I am the supervisor of science for grades six through 12 and integrated design and engineering for grades nine through 12.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Polway, and I am the supervisor of mathematics, grades six through 12. This first slide speaks to the different assessments that we'll be reporting out on this evening, but before we do that, we would like to express our sincere appreciation to the board, to the teachers, the students, the families, all of the administrators that are here today for working so hard to be able to get us to the point that we're at right now. So tonight, we're going to talk about two different state assessments that are given yearly, and they're the NJSLA, or the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments, and the DLM, or the Dynamic Learning Maps. The assessments for NJSLA were given in the spring of 2023, and they test proficiency towards standards. The NJSLA are statewide assessments that are recorded out on math, ELA and science. In ELA, we test students in grades three through nine. In science, the students are tested in grade bands, but at the ends of grades five, eight, and 11. In math, we test by grade level, three through eight, but then we also test by course level in the high school courses. We do have some middle school, the students that participate in those high schools, those high school assessments. Special education students with significant learning challenges are the students that participate in the DLM, and they participate in those assessments for ELA, math, and science. The first tests that we'll speak about tonight are the DLM. So again, as I mentioned before, the students that are taking these assessments are special education students who are instructed and assessed on what are known as essential elements. These are specific statements of knowledge and skills that are linked to the grade level expectations that are identified in those New Jersey State Learning Standards. The purpose of these DLM MAP essential elements is to build a bridge between that content in those standards to the actual academic expectations for these students that actually face, that are facing the most significant cognitive disabilities. ELA and math are tested in grades three through eight, and then again in 11. Science is again same as NJSLA, only tested at the end of the grade bands, so the science will be, the DLM will be given in the fifth grade, eighth, and 11th. The assessment ratings for the DLM are emerging, approaching, at target, and advanced. This table shows us the participation rate this year for the DLM. As you can see, we wound up having a total of 16 students participate in the DLM, and it's worthy of noting that 16 students may consist of students that are out-of-district placement students and also in district. Five students participated in the DLM for science, and 16 students participated in the DLM for math and ELA. This slide shows the number of students who are at target or advanced target for math and ELA. As you can see, 10 students in math and nine students in ELA either hit the target for their assessment or were advanced past their targets. For science, since the total number of students who were tested did not meet our threshold of 10 students, we were not able to report out on the science. All right, so not only tonight will we be reporting out on the results of these different assessments, but we'll be reporting out on, okay, so this is what we have, and what are we going to do about it now, okay? So in terms of our intervention plan for our students that participate in the DLM, teachers and the child study team continue to work together to meet specific learning goals for individual students and also to adhere to their IEP process. Using data from that DLM along with school-based assessment data, the team is able to develop these different intervention strategies to meet these needs, and we meet these needs through functional and performance-based learning opportunities that again are aligned to those essential elements. We've added different assessments from the general ed setting, such as the DIBELS and the FNP, to gain insight into different foundational strengths and also areas to grow on. We're utilizing the academic coaches to support the teachers in different center beast instruction for students. We've provided PD for the teachers on foundational reading programs such as EdMark and the Orton-Gillingham program, and there's opportunities that are continuously searched for and also implemented where students are integrated into the general ed settings, and they can go from morning meetings to the different specials and any other extracurricular activities. Dennis Jarvis will share with us the ELA scores and interventions.
In the spring of 2023, the NJSLA for English and Arts were administered to students in grades three through nine. The NJSLA ELA focused on reading comprehension skills and writing competencies. The types of tasks for writing are literary analysis tasks, research simulation tasks, and narrative writing tasks. For reading comprehension, students are asked questions on nonfiction and fiction texts. Scores range from 650 to 850, and then a reported as performance level is listed from one through five as described on the screen. This slide shows our percentage of students at each performance level for each grade level of ELA. Level five is exceeding expectations, level four is meeting, level three is approaching, two is partially meeting, and one is not meeting. When we are looking at this type of slide, we ideally want to see the greatest percentage of our students in the purple and greenish-blue colors on the right side of the bars. That said, we'd like to see an increase in proficiency for all of our students, especially the light blue, red, and green bars as well. Points of pride, across the grades, we range from 67% to 79% of students at level four or five, which is meeting or exceeding expectations. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see a number of valid test scores relative to the total number of students participating. The differences that we basically associate with a number of different factors here. One is for our ML students who are in district for less than a year, they do not take the test. Some students take the DLM as an alternative assessment, and some don't take the test for either test refusal or other extendedary circumstances. This slide represents Mawa's ELA scores in comparison with the state of New Jersey for grades three through five. Mawa is shown in blue, and the state of New Jersey is represented in red. Mawa outperforms the state in grades three through five with a difference over the state ranging from 25% to 29%, and this is always something that we like to say. This slide shows performance of our K3 schools in comparison to the district average of third-grade scores. The light blue bar indicates the percentage of passing scores for Betsy Ross, George Washington, and Lenape Meadows in comparison to the district average of 71. All three schools are over the state average of 42%. This slide shows you the year-to-year performance in ELA for grades three through five. Please note, this is not a cohort-to-cohort comparison, but rather a comparison of the scores for the last two years in a specific grade level. That said, we do see increases across all three grades. This next slide is valuable because we were able to start tracking our students' progress over a year-to-year basis, showing student growth over time. This is a grade three through five cohort comparison. In the first cluster of bars, you'll see the class of 2033 are sitting fourth graders. There was no test given in the second grade, but their third-grade scores are shown from last spring. In the middle of the cluster of bars, you can see their improvement from their third-grade scores to their fourth-grade scores for our current fifth-grade students. In the last cluster on the right-hand side, you'll see the scores for our current sixth-grade students, showing an increase from their fourth-grade scores to their fifth-grade Now we're shifting our focus to our grades six through nine ELA scores. This slide shows our percentage of Mawa students meeting or exceeding expectations as compared to the state of New Jersey. Of course, we always want to see our Mawa students outperforming the state, so we're happy to say that we're doing just that, with scores ranging from 17% to 23% over the state average. This slide is our year-to-year comparison for grades six through nine. Again, please note, this is not a cohort-to-cohort comparison. You can see that there's consistency in grade performance. Looking at this year-to-year comparison allows us to evaluate programs and curriculum to ensure our programming is maintaining similar outcomes year after year. This next slide shows our six-through-nine cohort comparison. We're happy to see an increase, especially in our sixth-to-seventh grade scores, showing a 12% increase. We do note that there is a drop from our fifth-grade scores to our sixth-grade scores. We'd like to see our students increase proficiency over years, as you see in the other grades, and we'll discuss different intervention strategies on subsequent slides that are being utilized to support this goal. It's always good to look at historical trends. Normally, we'd like to see five years in order to do this, however, we have two years where students did not take the assessment, but we wanted to provide you a glimpse of a historical trend chart going back to the NJSLA in 2019 for those grade levels who took the test at that time. As you look at the scores, you will notice in 2019, we were around 80% meeting or exceeding expectations, and after not testing students for two years, there was a slight decline. However, we are extremely proud of our students and staff as we now start to see our scoring trend increase once again. This slide represents the disaggregated data for the ELA assessment for our Mawa students in grades three through nine compared to the first line of data, which is the overall proficiency for our, for the district. The numbers represent the percentage of students at each performance level. As a reminder, we would like to see the majority of our students in the blue and purple areas on the right side of the screen. You will see that there are subgroups which stand out in comparisons to the district proficiency numbers, specifically our multilingual learners, MLs, and our special education students. I want everyone to keep in mind, for our ML students, these are students who are learning English, and their level of proficiency will greatly affect their ability to engage in these assessments. That is why we use other assessments to gauge increased proficiency, such as the WEADA Access Assessment, which we reported on back in August. For our special education students, it is worth noting that students in this subgroup have individual educational plans, which outline individual goals that they are working toward and grade level standards, maybe more difficult for them to attain with modifications and accommodations provided during testing. We will speak to the interventions in this slide here. So the slide outlines interventions grouped into two different categories: general supports for all students and supports intentionally addressed sub-group demographics. So for our K5 ELA intervention plan, we're going to utilize the IRA diagnostic along with MYPATH to mediate and strengthen skills, utilize diagnostic data from the IRA to intentionally group students based upon learning needs, and use our MYPATH for personalized learning in grades K through five, work on aligning words with prefixes and suffixes from spoken corp with content vocabulary in science and social studies, provide PD for our teachers on instructional strategies connected to writing rubrics where students score below median expectations, utilize table activities to strengthen literary gap skills, and then work with teaching students on how to refer to text through literary analysis and research simulating tasks while staying on topic. With respect to our subgroup supports, we're going to provide explicit instruction on context-specific vocabulary for nonfiction text and on frequently-used vocabulary for fiction text, provide push and support during core instruction periods for intensive, intensive speech instruction, supplement our reading to write level text with grade-level text connected with instruction on close reading strategies in the spring, utilize the digital item library, expose students to on-grade level standards as they are vetted in the NJSLA test questions, provide pull-out support with reading specialists for students performing below expectations, use a Lexapro English program for our multilingual learning students. Should be noted that a program for our multilingual population has been updated to provide push and support and pull-out supports for students with lower proficiency, and then provide tutoring for our ELA that runs December through May. With respect to our six-12 ELA intervention plan, our general supports are going to target instruction using IRA data, MYPATH, and guided lessons provided by IRA with support from a literacy coach, continue to develop instructional practices in the work with vocabulary contacts with new ideas, and build upon that work in strategies for informational and literary texts, provide a skills-based test boot camp for the week before the state testing or the start of the school year, provide professional development teachers on the voice utilization of small group instruction. Relative to subgroup supports, we're going to re-identify students for LitLab and College Career RAS to include IRA and link-in diagnostic results based on student individual performance, and then review student placement, in-support level, and collab classes in order to assure a fit based upon performance in the areas of identifying deficits. Next, Danielle Polway will share the results of our Math scores from that.
So as I mentioned earlier, the different grade level assessments that were given to the students in the spring, we have also have seventh and eighth graders that are participating in an advanced math program, so they would be participating in the Algebra I and Geometry NJSLA assessments. As of last year, in the high school, only grade nine students in mathematics will be sitting for that NJSLA, so whatever course those students are in, Algebra I, Geometry or Algebra II, that will be the assessment that they sit for. These tests are measuring the students' abilities to apply skills and concepts, understand multi-step problems that require some abstract thinking, lots of abstract thinking, and modeling real-world applications. There are two different sections for the tests, one uses with calculator and without calculator, and then one is with all calculator. The scores range the same as ELA, 650 to 850, and those performance levels are also the As we run through these next slides for all of the math scores, they will mirror what ELA also portrayed for us, so I won't go into it as in-depth explaining the different, like, introduction to the slides, but I will be specific to the math part of it. So this slide in particular shows us the percentage of students at each grade level for the NJSLA math test. You'll notice at the bottom, even though I mentioned that we had students that participated in the Algebra II assessment, we don't have any scores listed there, and that's because we had under the threshold of 10 students take that exam in the ninth grade, so we're not permitted to report out there. As Dennis mentioned, in a slide like this, we're really looking for, and our goal is to have students sitting in our purple and our light blue or teal blue bars to the right-hand side. You'll notice there for grade eight into Algebra I and Geometry, and I'll speak a little bit more about this later, about the numbers of students that are actually sitting for those different grades according, different tests according to the grade level. Again, also on the right, we've reported out on the number of valid scores versus the total possible test takers for each one of those grade levels or those courses, and the same reason that Dennis gave before, the same reasons for the differences in the numbers, the numerator and the denominator of those fractions, will hold true. This slide shows our scores for grades three through five for the number, for the percentage of students that are meeting or exceeding expectations. The blue bars represent our Mawa scores, and the red bars represent the state scores, and as you can see and we're proud of, we are definitely above that threshold line for the state scores. This slide depicts our year-to-year comparison for the grades three through five math scores. Again, please note that this is not a cohort-to-cohort, but it is a year-to-year comparison, so it's same grade level, but different students. And as you can see, the scores have increased from 2022 to 2023 across these three grade This next slide again is for grades K through three. It's our school comparison to the district. The lighter blue bar represents the amount of students who met or exceeded the expectations in each one of our K through three schools. The darker blue represents the students who met or exceeded those expectations in the third grade as a whole, and all of the schools, you notice here, outperformed the state average score of that 46%. This next slide depicts our cohort comparisons. This slide again, we represent as being really valuable because we're able to start following students again as a year over year as their cohort using the same test. In that first cluster of bars, you'll see that class of 2033 who are our current fourth graders, where there was no test given in the second grade, but their third-grade score is shown there. The next cluster of bars that you see are the scores of our current fifth graders, and their scores basically remain consistent from the third to the fourth grade. In that last cluster, you can see the scores of the current sixth graders, and they show an increase of their scores from their fourth to their fifth-grade scores. So we'll now move to the next grade band, or the six-through-eight grade band. This slide shows our scores compared to the state for the percentage of students who are meeting or exceeding the expectations. Once again, the blue is the same color scheme, the blue are the Mawa scores, and the red are the state scores. Again, we proudly say that all of our Mawa scores outperform the state. But what's really important to represent at this point, and really to note, is that the scores in the blue bar in grade eight are not representative of all of the students in the eighth grade that actually sat for the NJSLA in the eighth grade. This blue bar represents the scores for students who took the Math 8 NJSLA, but if an eighth grader took Algebra I or Geometry, they would have taken the Algebra I or Geometry NJSLA, and their scores are represented in the next couple of slides. This slide represents our year-to-year comparison from 2022 to 2023. Again, this is not a cohort-to-cohort, but rather just a year-to-year for the last two years in a specific grade level. This slide is valuable to us because it allows us to take a look at curriculum and allows us to evaluate program. We're really proud of the work that's been done with this upward trend in these year-to-year This slide does show our cohort comparisons, showing the data for the same groups of students from 2019 to 2023. The first bar cluster shows students who are currently in our seventh grade, and those are their scores from their fifth into their sixth. The first bar cluster shows students who are currently in our seventh grade, and those are their scores from their fifth and to, into their sixth grade year. The next set of bars, the middle ones, are for our current eighth graders, showing their scores from their third grade year, then to their sixth, and then into their seventh. Finally, that last set of bars shows the scores for our current ninth grade students, so our current freshmen, showing their scores from their fourth grade year and then into their seventh and their eighth grade. This last set of, of, of bars is a little bit, it's a little bit tough to look at. One thing to remember is that it doesn't represent a true cohort, right? The, those students, the, the dark blue bar that's all the way on the right-hand side over there represents our students that are sitting for the NJSLA math. Remember that we have students who are participating in accelerated math program. So those students are not the same students that took their fourth and their seventh grade test, okay? They're not in that, those scores. This slide represents our cohort comparison. This slide does not represent a cohort comparison. This, this slide represents our, their, the scores comparing, um, Mawa to the state, okay? In each one of these high school, um, courses. And when I say high school courses, Algebra One is considered a high school course, but we do have middle school students participating in that course, and as such, those middle school students will sit for those exams. So the first set of bars that you see there are the scores for our middle school students, um, that are sitting for their Algebra One, seventh and eighth, or the seventh and eighth grader sitting for the Algebra One test. Okay, the, the next set of bars are grade nine students that are sitting for an Algebra One test. Next set of bars is the, all of our geometry students, whether they have been in the eighth or the ninth grade, and the last is the ninth grade Algebra Two students. We exceed the state averages in each one of these assessment categories, um, except for one. We're really proud about exceeding the state. We recognize that there's some work to be done in one of our courses, in the Algebra One Geometry course, um, and we're ready to hit that head on. And I'll talk about those interventions that, um, we'll be employing this year, um, to help us to make a comeback, and, because that's what we're going to do. All right, so this slide shows you the year-to-year performance in math, um, for the district Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two. Again, this is not a cohort-to-cohort, but it's a year-to-year. And even though I just said that this slide is not representative of a cohort-to-cohort, I do think it's important to compare at least one kind of a cohort. So in twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-one percent of the students that met or exceeded expectations in the Math Eight NJSLA. This group is represented in the high school Algebra One data that's shown here in that second cluster of bars. So you're looking now at that, that darker, uh, blue Algebra One number. In twenty twenty-three, those students increased their scores to the twenty-four percent. So we did see a cohort increase in that specific set of students. This slide represents the percentage of students, um, who are represented in our subgroup data. As Dennis mentioned already before, we're looking for students to be in our purple, in our blue. Some of the subgroups are not there yet. In, and in addition to that, something else to note is that some of the students that occupy seats in some of the subgroups actually double in some of the other categories. So they might be the same student that's actually sitting in a couple of these groupings. I will definitely share and be very specific with the interventions that we'll be using this year to assist all of these students, um, that populate these subgroups. And here they are. So here's our intervention plans, here's what we're going to do about it. So we are, we are proud of where our students are, but we know that there's, you know, there's some room for growth. Again, we, we organize the support in terms of general supports for our students and also specific supports for some of the students, um, that might be struggling in our subgroups. So for K through five, we'll be utilizing the diagnostic data from IREDA to intentionally group students based upon their learning needs. The math coach is being utilized to provide support to students in the area of math workshop. The scope and sequence is being revised for instructional experiences that will include fraction work to occur before state testing and not after the state testing. In our data teams, there's focus on multi-step word problems and how to infuse that concept throughout the entire year. The PLCs at the four to five level, the grades four to five level, are focusing on these interventions in the when instruction period or the what I need now instructional period. For our subgroup supports, we have, um, new push-in that goes along with our pull-out supports for the, with the math specialist for students that are performing below those grade level expectations. There's an increased use of manipulatives to provide concrete instruction, um, to complement the abstract notion that students are expected to, um, to be proficient in. There's a use of MyMath and other supplementary materials that align directly to the standards that are more concrete and accessible to the students in a resource room and self-contained settings. We're using programs such as Lexia and Magic School AI for translation purposes and scaffolding purposes for ML students. There's tutoring for mathematics that will run from December through May for the ML students. And we're using a guided math approach to support increased small group instruction, um, during core time. On the six through twelve level, the general supports for our students include also using the diagnostic data from IREDA in grades six through eight, and with that limited use in grade nine, as we spoke about before with the need for the Algebra One. So, um, we are using that, that Algebra One with the cohort of students. We're also using the Linkit benchmarks to intentionally group students based upon their learning needs to give them what they need for small group instruction. We're using MyPath for personalized instruction in grades six through eight. And as I previously shared for our high school Algebra One scores, we, we recognize that, um, we need, um, some intensified prerequisite skill remediation, which is, um, necessary for foundational successes in Algebra One. So our specific cohort this year of CP Algebra One students took the IREDA over the Linkit, and this data is going to be supporting their targeted instruction in our lab and our regular, um, classes for individual students. For those students that are now in Geometry from last year to this year, we're intentionally creating a spiraled approach of those Algebra One scores to include in the Geometry so that they have one-step and two-step equations, multi-step problems, and analysis of graphs, um, coordinated with the Geometry. There's a refocus on major and supporting standards in Type One questions, and we're using the digital item library to guide our work with that. We're continuing with the Tier One interventions from last year that spoke to vocabulary acquisition and using cubes-like strategies to solve multi-step problems. And lastly, for all students, we've audited the grades six through eight curriculum to create opportunities to integrate those Geometry standards throughout our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curricula to expose students to material that otherwise may not have been considered as priority standards through, um, our COVID learning experience as per, um, the state with their priority learning, um, documentation. Terms of our subgroups, in addition to all of the, um, the core interventions, we'll be working with students again through Lexia at this level and Magic School AI, where pre-teaching prerequisite standards were appropriate, um, as determined by prerequisite reporting needs through the IREDA and the Linkit data. We're addressing those prerequisite skill remediations in math labs and CCR courses. We're utilizing the individual learning plans or the ILPs for MLs to plan instructions according to their can-do statements. And there's explicit instruction on academic and content-specific vocabulary, um, to make sure that students are, are living in the right world with the vocabulary that they need to use in terms of explaining. So next, Dennis will share, share with you the information for Science.
In grades five, eight, eleven, the NJSLA for Science measures student proficiency in scientific and engineering practices in the context of cross-fitting concepts and disciplinary core ideas. As with the other testing content areas, students demonstrated their acquired skills and knowledge by answering selected response items and constructive response items. Note, there's a few key differences with our Science assessment, and again, it's tested only at the end of the grade band standards in grade five, eight, and eleven. The scale scores do not run from six fifty to eight fifty like ELA and Math. It's on a one hundred to three hundred scale, and we have one less proficiency level going one through four, not one through five. This slide represents our Mawa students that either met or exceeded expectations in the five, eight, and eleven grade exam as compared to state in Jersey. As you can see here with Mawa represented in blue, we again outperformed the state in students meeting or exceeding expectations in all three testing grades. You can also see that we increased proficiency over the state as we moved from grade five to grade eight and then finally grade eleven. This slide represents the percentage of students that fell in each performance level for two thousand twenty-three in comparison to two thousand twenty-four. Given that the Science assessment doesn't have a direct year-to-year cohort comparison like ELA and Mathematics does, this historical data allows us to see positive movement in greater detail relative to our instructional strategies. As you can see, the shifts in performance also for the two thousand twenty-three assessment are modest, but they are moving in a positive direction, with higher percentages of students in the purple and green and lower percentages of students in the blue and the red. Additionally, the slide includes a column to the far right of the screen to show you how many valid scores were reported out of the total number of, uh, students that could have been tested. This comparison slide represents our percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two, and two thousand twenty-three, um, the fifth, eighth, and eleventh grade assessment. Just note, two thousand nineteen was the first year of the Science Assessment. Within this slide, we begin to see a couple of class cohorts and their testing results, um, at the inclusion of respective grade band standards. So if you look at the orange boxes, this represents the graduating class of two thousand twenty-three. You can see their performance in grade eight on the left-hand side of the screen, uh, I'm sorry, in the middle, in two thousand nineteen. And in grade eleven, or their two thousand twenty-two on the right-hand side of the screen. Looking at the yellow boxes, this is the graduating class of two thousand twenty-six. You see their performance in grade five from two thousand nineteen on the left-hand side of the screen, and then again, grade eight in two thousand twenty-two in the middle of the screen there. As they are currently sophomores, they will take their last NJSLA Science Assessment at the end of next year, the spring of two thousand twenty-five. While we see modest improvements in our scores, uh, over the last two years, as a whole, we're going to discuss a number of interventions to help us significantly improve these scores. This slide represents a demographic breakdown for our Mawa students and each of the three tested grades relative to the percentage of students at each performance level. Something to keep in mind as you look at the results, um, again, these demographic percentages are only representative of the student population in grades five, eight, and eleven. And as Danielle spoke to before, uh, some of these demographic groups may overlap depending upon which groups the students fall into. That said, our goal continues to be to improve every student in every subgroup, and to address that, we're going to speak to the planned interventions in the next two slots. For our grade four or five, um, interventions, uh, due to the subgroups needing, you know, across the board, needing improvement everywhere, we are, we're going to lump them into one, uh, one general support that every student will be, uh, exposed to. So for, we're forming a four or five science committee to look at alternative programs. The current program is online, um, so we're looking for a program that's far more hands-on and is based in experiential learning. We're going to be focusing on aligning words with prefixes and suffixes in spoken court, uh, with content vocabulary in science and social studies. We're going to analyze our current practices scheduling for Science, uh, as we're looking to create more cohesion for Science teaching time in the current rotation. In the past, we usually call our students out for ESL services during Science and Social Studies time, so as not to take them for granted. This year, we created a push-in model for our ML learners where ESL teachers will push in during this time to support vocabulary acquisition, uh, and application. We're utilizing Lexia to support, uh, I'm sorry, to help support vocabulary acquisition in mathematics, and we're using Magic School AI for translation and scaffolding purposes. We're leveraging our existing makerspaces and makerspace process to prioritize, uh, the foundational understanding of the engineering design process, the scientific method, um, and the science and engineering principles that are intertwined with our standards. At our six twelve level, uh, we broke it down again to general supports and subgroup supports. For our general supports, we're utilizing our IREDA data in conjunction with our ELA and Math counterparts. We're adapting the IREDA teacher's books for instruction in both reading and math, uh, for Science lessons at the appropriate achievement levels. We're going to provide structured and targeted review for respective three-year grade band content and life-threatening space in physical science prior to the NJSLA assessment in the spring, uh, in their respective Science courses. We're going to continue to focus on learning experiences where students utilize sentence stems as a strategy for problem-solving those NGSS-style three-dimensional questions. We're going to continue to utilize close reading and reading annotation strategies, particularly for informational text and data analysis. We're going to look to, uh, provide some vertical, vertical articulation between our grade five and grade six teachers to help better bridge the shift to our secondary Science standards and skills. Relative to our subgroup supports, we're utilizing IREDA and Linkit data to identify individual students represented in these subcategories in their current Science classes for our purposeful grouping of small group, uh, instruction. And utilizing that same information, we're going to target specific skill and content instruction with these students. We're looking to pre-teach content-specific vocabulary for our ML student population and utilize our cyber-trained teachers for professional development to best assist our teachers in instructing our ML, uh, student population. So over the last forty slides, we represented our students through a lot of, a lot of rubrics, a lot of data, a lot of numbers, a lot of charts. We wanted to put a face to the, to the, to the data, to the, to the kids, um, giving inside view of instructional experiences in action here. The picture to the far left of your screen, the upper left-hand corner there, um, shows students at GW Fall under MyPath on IREDA. The second picture from the left shows students, uh, in small group phonics instructions to meet their specific student needs. The bottom right picture shows our middle school students doing station work to extract context clues about domain-specific vocabulary. And lastly, the upper right-hand side, um, students in grade six were working collaboratively on an assignment where they were practicing their use of mathematics content vocabulary.
That, that's all I have for my report. Um, are there any? Are there any questions?
I have a couple.
Right.
Sure, so, um, so a couple few, in, I start off with my normal same question from every year, is this, these tests were done last year. Results come in sometime over summer, early beginning of school year. School year is now two full months in. You know, where, where do we overlay the intervention for kids that have already moved? Everyone's already moved up a grade, everyone who's already moved on. Teachers have already been doing their great job of what they do with these kids. Kind of, how does, how does the intervention work, um, in terms of going forward? Secondly, you look at algebra specifically, and let it be Meadows versus the district. Instead of, aside from intervention, are we asking ourselves what that happened and why is it like that? And what occurred, like, let alone the intervention, I, I get, oh, that looks very robust. But what happened? Like, how does algebra get that bad? How does let it be drop-off from the district that bad? I mean, it's unfortunate, but it's just, do we know why? You know, obviously, the intervention plan is an intervention plan. Those are all great things, I think, we would throw at the wall over, because we have to, we need to leave that plan. But is that, are those steps coming from a position of why it happened?
So I'll do, I'll start with the interventions and let it be Meadows, and you jump in for algebra. Along the lines of interventions, we, we've, we've spoken about this at a couple meetings along the lines of the assessment and the information we get from the state assessment, um, and how we can apply any sort of information that they give us. And we've talked about the struggles along the lines of the way that the NJSLA information is shared and how we can, um, act on that information. That's why, um, the team has engaged and worked with IREDA as well as Linkit. What I can tell you is, um, last year, at the end of last year, we started the spring, in the spring administering the IREDA assessment. I'm very happy, um, and impressed with the information it's giving and how we can, uh, address it immediately. This year, we just gave the fall assessment, and we're already underway taking part in data meetings. It's not even just the data that they give us, uh, they break it out into subgroups, uh, they allow us to see the allow us to see the overarching picture of proficiency, but they also allow us to see the various skills within those subgroups that we need to attend to. Because in, in the grand scheme of things, when you talk about what are we going to do? What we need to understand is not just proficiency levels, but also what are the deficiencies so we can build them up to make sure that that proficiency level is gained. So that work is being done currently over the past week into next week along the lines of looking at grade-specific and subject-specific data. Along the lines of that, it's not just identifying where the proficiencies are, but also creating intervention plans aligned to what the need is. So as of right now, they are building their tier-one intervention plans, which addresses the overarching need for the entire grade or the entire class or the entire department, but simultaneously, they're also working with other data points within their class, not just iReady, whether it's benchmark assessments in the, in the secondary level or running records, on-demand writing, and things like that. So that work is currently being done with the data that we have in-house. So that's the first piece. Would you like to talk about the algebra piece?
And I'm glad you asked that question, because we were asking ourselves the same question, what the heck happened? So I, we've done a really deep dive into the standards that were taught over the last three years, in particular during COVID learning. There were priority standards that were just not priority, there were standards that would normally sit in a major and additional setting of the way that the standards are broken down that were not considered priority standards. In addition to that, learning took, um, learning took its, now again, this is where we think we went wrong, so this is why we're putting the interventions in place that we're doing, right? So there was, let us get to as much as we can in a shortened amount of time. As a result, the deeper practice, we don't know if it was really done appropriately, right? So now, at this point right now, what's being done for the program that's sitting in the high school right now is what we just talked about. That subgroup that sits in those scores that are a little bit lower from last year, that actual program is being addressed with the iReady so that we can appropriately pinpoint prerequisite skills that need remediation to have students be more algebra-ready to be able to access the algebra content at that time. The students that left the algebra one high school course that are now in geometry, we have now since developed like a mini-scoping sequence that's sitting within and spiraled into that geometry course to make sure that the, the geometry units and standards are including the algebra sta, the algebra standards that can naturally be spiraled in there to make sure that we remediate that content at the same time. So, I don't really want to say this specifically, but it's like an al, it's like an aljo, an alja, aljo geo course, right, this year, so that we can make sure that we, we get that covered.
Um, just to follow a question to the Lenape results, I just, I can't remember, do we do breakdown per school of the, you know, sort of disaggregated data per, because I'm just wondering, also, are there more, is there more diversity at Lenape than our other two schools? And does that perhaps have a contributing factor as well? I don't think we, we didn't probably look at that, but I'm just, I'm just curious if that's something, and I know, I was just going to say, you presented this to instruction and curriculum, and I didn't think to ask it then, but it's just something for, perhaps for future, for us to look at individual schools and, because, I mean, you know, that's a conversation that has been longstanding, right, that Lenape may have some particular needs that the other two schools do. I, it's just something for us to think about.
Let me kind of just give a little frame of reference. This is the first time that we're actually breaking out by school at the elementary. If you remember correctly, we've always done K-three as a collective group, that's how we've recorded out in the past. That being said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of great work that's happening at Lettuce Meadows specific to analyzing the data with, with, with the students in which we serve in each school. So what I can tell you is, what's going to be a focus for every single school is to identify where our students come in and what their proficiency level is, the interventions that we're putting into place, and tracking the growth. So our, our focus along the lines of any school is to take a look at our fall assessment scores, put our intervention plans in place, track them, so I can definitely report back to you along the lines of, in January, where are we at along the lines of the growth specific to that grade three, grade four, it doesn't matter. But that's going to be a focus point along the lines of, when they walk into our doors, what is their proficiency level? What is the intentional work that we're doing specific to what they need? And then see how they track over time. So that's the work that we are currently doing. What I can tell you is programmatically, we're doing the same programs across the board. What I can tell you along the lines of effort and, and value of the teaching that's taking place in all schools, there's great teaching that's happening across the board. So what I, I can't, I can't give you an exact answer along the lines of where we're at along the lines of walking in proficiency level, because I don't have that information in front of me right now, but what I can tell you is, we will be tracking from our fall administration to our winter administration, and then ultimately, our spring administration. And then I can report back along the lines of, what are those growth scores over time for this year?
So if I understand correctly, and I just want to make sure I have this right there.
Okay, Harry, was it on?
I think it was. Hello? Maybe. Okay, right. What I'm, what I'm getting from your comments, I want to make sure that I'm right, we are able to track the class as they move up, right? Because obviously, you know, comparing this year's fifth grade to last year's fifth grade really is irrelevant.
Correct.
It's different, so I guess, so we do have a way to track as they go, the, the individual class as they move, right?
You're absolutely correct. So we're, we're able to track cohorts, we're able to track individuals. So the value of this, this assessment is, when we have them on intake of, when they take the assessment, whenever they come to our district. And because we have a commitment to this program over time, we're going to be able to see what that progress takes place from the individual level to the grade level.
And for, you know, for instance, we were talking about algebra in, in high school, so those eleventh graders obviously are getting the hybrid class, you know, in the following year. I'm assuming we're able to kind of extrapolate and preemptively put some of this stuff in place for the current eleventh graders, and we don't have to wait till these results for next year, right?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
So in other words, the NJLA, NJSLA for this group of eleventh graders.
Okay.
Okay, now they're twelfth graders. So as twelfth graders, they're taking the hybrid algebra.
No, no, wrong, wrong. Ninth grade was eleventh grade.
Eight, okay, eight.
Ninth grade was algebra one.
Yeah.
So now those are sitting tenth graders.
Okay, so now are we able to kind of take what we've learned from, from these results and kind of extrapolate that and preemptively start doing some of this stuff for the eighth graders, the eighth grade class now?
Exactly. That's exactly right. And what's the, what's, in addition to that preemptive piece, is the information that we have gotten from our, from the first diagnostic, the first diagnostic, that specifically speaks to those prerequisite skills that we need to grow in, in order to be algebra-ready for the ne, for the next grade.
Um, Dr. Burke?
Just a comment specifically on the ELA scores of economically disadvantaged students. So one of the most important interventions is just simply getting more books into the hands of kids, and that means weekly checkouts from their school library. Economically disadvantaged students have the least access to books at home, their parents are the least able to be able to get out to Mawa Public Library, and so one of the most important interventions is them to be able to check out books from their school library as often as possible. Again, it's my understanding that that still isn't happening, so more opportunities for book checkouts, especially for the younger kids. It benefits everyone to have more books around, it especially benefits economically disadvantaged students.
Mr. Gallo?
I think, Ben asks the same question every year at these presentations, and I think one of the things that was so exciting for me last year is when we approved the iReady contract, Dr. Dora touched on it, but it puts us in the driver's seat of administering the tests, getting the results virtually immediately, and in addition to sort of pinpointing individual student strengths and weaknesses, it also has the feedback to give our teachers, like, this student requires this type of intervention on the, on the teaching side. So it's, it's a two-term tool. And, and when I saw Dr. Bavino at the start of the meeting, she looked so, so tired because she's been going through the spreadsheets on the iReady data, but this is a rev, this will revolutionize...
She's working very hard.
She's working very hard, but it responds to what Bennett has been asking for years, and I think we're not, you know, we might not see it this year, but we will start seeing some buildup to this. And are we doing a presentation in January on iReady? No, is that what you mentioned?
No, I'm saying, we can track it over time.
Oh, we can track it, yes.
We're not...
And it goes to Briggs' question of longitudinal data tracking, which has been my predecessor who was asking for seven years ago, and it's, it's going to be revolutionary, I think, the way we, what we know about our students, the intervention, how we crack our interventions. I think the intervention plan that we have here, I mean, it's very robust, but I know there's probably ten times more stuff that's actually happening in the classroom than what's here, but these are the top focus areas that'll be, that our teachers will be exposing our students to. So the NJLA, NJSLA is by its very nature has been point to that sort of a rearview mirror look, and what we're looking at is, hey, we have these kids this year, we have them for maybe another two, three, four, five, and if they're younger or longer, what are we going to do during that time that we have with them? And that, that's, I think, the exciting part of iReady is really to give us tools we haven't had before.
And I, I think with this presentation too, I think the interventions, we've not had that book, I mean, it, this is a very, very kind, we, a very comprehensive report, so thank you very much. And we, as instruction curriculum, were, we had the, you know, privilege of having hearing this already before, but I just wanted to also give Mr. Jarvis an opportunity because there was a very robust conversation about the science scores, which, again, of concern that no subgroup made it over fifty percent. I just wanted you to have an opportunity, because you provided some good feedback to us at the committee level about what we're doing and what you're doing. But again, the interventions, the strategies, what, you know, Mr. Gallo is speaking to about the fact that we have iReady and we have this New Jersey tiered support system, I mean, we have put in, in this district, thank you to the administrative team, to Dr. Bavino, I mean, there's so much now that we are really looking at it, looking at kids individually, looking at cohort groups, and, I mean, it's, it's just amazing stuff. So I think we're going to have, continue to have more and more, you know, valuable reports going forward with very good information. So thank you. But I just want to give you that opportunity, because it was a very robust conversation about science.
Thank you. You know, and I know, you know, from the science perspective, I think the biggest boom for us is going to be Linkit, because it is a standards-based, it's a skill-based, you know, benchmarking, that we can benchmark each of our individual content areas, we get that immediate feedback, like we do, we have the three benchmarks throughout the year, so we can track that growth as well across all subgroups, whether it's a general or the subgroups themselves. And, you know, it's, it is not predictive in nature yet in terms of what the NJSLA scores will be, but we're working with that as part of that process to, you know, I guess to develop that algorithm for Linkit, but it does provide us that, that, you know, rock solid evidence that, you know, these are the areas we need to strengthen, and specifically more so for our subject area, it's more so the skills, our standards speak more of our skills than they do in terms of our content.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Uh, thank you, Dr. Bavino, because I know, and, and you look, you look beautiful, Dr. Bavino, and Mr. Jarvis, and Ms. Polway, thank you very much for all your time.
You're welcome.
And Dr. Datura, would you like to?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the administrative team for all the work that we're doing specific to whether it's data, whether it's everyday tasks and responsibilities. So thank you so much for coming out and supporting your colleagues, being present for this work, and thank you for continued dedication to our kids. You guys are more than welcome to go if you'd like.
And you're always welcome to stay. No pressure. Anyway, thank you very much for...
Do you want to mention that the report will be on the website shortly? That's your presentation?
The presentation will, there you go, Mr. Gallo.
I'm just kidding, I'm just, this, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, this presentation will be posted on the website, on Dr. Bavino's curriculum instruction website.
All right, is that all, Dr. Datura?
That's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bleeker, do you have a report this evening?
No, no, I'll report this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Fair, report this evening?
I didn't have one originally, but I'm just reviewing the agenda, and I just want to make, I just want to point out a few things, because we have a, a series of appointments of new paraprofessionals. So we just recently had a paraprofessional job fair here in district, which yielded a whole host of new staff joining, joining Mawa schools, so I just want to welcome them officially, and we're excited to have them. And that's it, thank you.
Okay. Excellent, thank you very much. Um, okay, my report, um, all right, so, and see, this is why they, they always leave, and then I have nice things to say about Mawa High School, and, um, so Mawa High School was recognized by the College Board and named to the AP Advanced Placement School Honor Roll, earning Silver Distinction. So Mawa High School offers twenty-four AP courses. We had fifty-two point five percent, or a hundred and four of the seniors, so this was from the class of twenty-three, take at least one AP exam during high school. Eighty-seven percent of our seniors scored a three or higher on at least one AP exam, which is really remarkable. The average score for the class of twenty twenty-three was three point eight out of five. And lastly, I mean, these are like rock stars, twelve point six percent, or twenty-five of our seniors actually took five or more AP exams. So, again, congratulations to Mawa High School for earning this distinction, and to all our students who continue to excel academically. Also, we have, from the class of twenty twenty-four, National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, Merrick T. Sharp, which is an incredible thing to be a scholarship semifinalist among all, so these are, these are based on the results when they took the twenty, the PSAT in twenty twenty-two. So we have Merrick T. Sharp as a semifinalist, and then we have several commended students in the class of twenty twenty-four, including Matthew Saloon, Peter A. Kaya, Rachika, Vishak Menon, David Kobobell, Andrew Tran, John Wu, Iran Aman, Lakshita Palanivelu, Nicholas Franco, Christina Wang, and Anthony Lallande. So, again, being named a commended student, these are all students and our scholarship semifinalists to have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. So congratulations again to all our students, and again, another example of how Mawa High School continues to just demonstrate academic excellence. Also wanted to recognize our marching Thunderbirds, who won first place, I mean, amazing, with a score of eighty-eight point eight nine. They were awarded High Music and High Visual Awards for their performance of Olympus in Division Three A at Butler High School. So congratulations to our marching Thunderbirds. And that was all, oh, and the last thing, which will come up again later, but I just, again, want to highlight the Mawa Schools Foundation Thunderbird Run, which is on Sunday. I think the weather is going to be okay. So this is, this Sunday, the twenty-second, the five K starts at eight thirty, the two-mile walk at eight thirty-five, the kids' run, ten fifteen. Now, if I noticed correctly, registration ends tonight, it's at the eighteenth, I think eleven PM. So go to the website, mawaschoolsfoundation.org, and again, because of all the efforts of the Mawa Schools Foundation, they continue to support the board and all the extra things in the schools, and we thank them very much, and we wish them a very, very successful Thunderbird Run. All right, that's all I have. Now, let's go on to board committee reports. Who do I have this evening? Mr. Gallo?
The Finance Committee met on October eleventh. We did a very preliminary review of enrollment in September. This is the first time I've seen the total district count go up, we were up plus two overall district, but there was, there were a couple of other trends inside the data. It seems like our kindergarten class is about very small this year, the pressure at Bethany also somewhat taken off, so that means that kids must be coming in from other move-ins to the town in the middle school grades. But the official numbers will be done... But the official numbers will be done in October. But this is the preliminary of what was happening in September. We also reviewed our health plan and prescription benefit plan. It looks like for our budget planning purposes, we're going to be okay in 2024 based on the rates that we received from the state. We've reviewed current balance of cap reserve, maintenance reserve, and emergency reserve. These reserve amounts will be finalized once the audit is closed for 2023. I think in the future, we're going to be recording on the status of those reserves via capital yield. There will be issues coming up at that. There was no update on the ROD grant. These are state grants to help pay for capital projects in the district. No, we haven't got an update on the official list of projects we're going to be approved for, but we did learn that we have an indefinite amount of time to spend the money, which is good. Project updates, the grant stand project was, has been completed. Final payment for that project is on this week's agenda. The HVAC project over at GW, the change order that we talked about last time is on, there's a resolution to move money from cap reserve to the budget to pay for that change order. But the change order's already been implemented, and GW has heat, which was the aim of that. Due to savings we had in our paving program, we're going to undertake a drainage improvement project out here in the parking lot, which is also on this week's agenda. We also briefly discussed CUSAC and the implications for our finance facility areas. We look like we're in good shape. The business office is taking some proactive steps to assess where we are on facilities, CUSAC indicators. And the other project that we sort of have in our lot, we've been talking about for a long time, is the lighting between the area of the grandstand and the concession stand. Currently, the practice is to get a portable light generator from Mawa Police, thank you, and illuminate that area, and we're looking at ways to do some permanent lighting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallo, and thank you for your committee minutes that went out to the full board.
And thank you, Prima, for having me do them.
Any other board committee reports this evening? Ms. Abenara?
Just a quick highlight of some events going on around town. For those who had not heard, Mawa Day is rescheduled again. We're going to try on 10/28 to host Mawa Day. The long-term forecast actually shows rain for that day right now, so we should...
Why? Trista, why?
It just is what it is. We should just do it in the rain and have a good old time. So that will be on 10/28. Also happening on 10/28 at Mawa High School, the Film Arts and Music Committee from Town Hall is hosting a Stranger Things Comes to Mawa event. So Carabono from Stranger Things and Mr. Panos will be there to answer questions, have conversations with the audience, et cetera, et cetera. So this will be happening 10/28 at 7:00 PM. You can buy your tickets online.
She's the mother from Stranger Things, my daughter clarified. That's who she is, in case you didn't know, because I wasn't sure. In case you don't watch Stranger Things.
As Prima mentioned, the Thunderbird Run is the Sunday, 10/22. Fingers crossed for really nice weather after rain Friday and Saturday. Looking forward to that event as always. This Friday is Homecoming at Mawa High School. Our middle school cheerleaders will be there as well. So we are looking forward to a very fun evening in the rain, but that is what we're used to at this point. 10/25, there's an eighth grade open house being hosted at Mawa High School at 7:00 PM. It's a great event for eighth grade students and their families. It's just a first, a first open house of many that will happen during the year, but it's good to get that started now. An email came out this week from Dr. Dettore about our newest Thunderbird partnership called Blessing Baskets. So as a district, we are collecting full Thanksgiving meals to then be distributed back out to families in Mawa who really could use that support and help. All the details are in the email that went out to the entire school community, the Google form to be able to register, and then the shopping lists that are available, whether it be canned goods, produce, et cetera, or just shop right gift cards that can help any family that's in need this year to make sure that they also have Thanksgiving dinner on the table. Drop off for that will be on 11/15 from 4 to 7 at the Think Tank. When I've been Meadows is hosting a very special event called the Pumpkin Plays this year on Friday, 10/27. So they're inviting the community into the school. You'll have the opportunity for students at that school, they carve their own pumpkins, they will be on display outside. They're making paper lanterns to illuminate pathways through the school and outside. And I think it is a very fun community event. $5 admission is required. You can buy your tickets online. All proceeds go to funding the Whenapi Meadows HSO. I'm not Whenapi parent anymore, but we will most likely be there because it's such a cute event. And your $5 ticket comes with apple cider and donuts, and who does not love apple cider and donuts? 11/15 kicks off American Education Week. So details will come from individual schools, but essentially, we open our doors to our parents and guardians to join us in the classroom, see what your students are working on, be a little bit involved in the classroom. Each school handles this different, so just look for the emails that will come from your building principals on which days we will be invited in. Oh, sorry. 10/24, there is a program being hosted at the Mawa Senior Center. It's a Be Smart Gun Safety presentation in conjunction with the Mawa Police Department. This is a really great event that will just talk to families and to community members about gun safety in the home, how to safely have guns in your home, how to keep kids safe. So I think that this is a really great event that everybody should be open to attending. I think that is amazing.
Thank you, Ms. Abenara. And I'm sure you just missed it, but November 12th is DiVale this year for... I didn't want to take you, but our next meeting is like the 15th, I think. So happy DiVale to all those who celebrate DiVale on the 12th. I'll bring snacks, I think, on the 15th perhaps for DiVale. All right, so just quickly on instruction curriculum, unless, did anyone else? John, did you have anything? Okay. So our September meeting, Nikki Van Es came to speak with us about the Teams partnership for 2023. That stands for Empathy Equality Entrepreneurship Mission. It partners with our 11th grade coursework on contemporary issues, which is a semester course. Multiple schools actually in the local area are involved with this, about 30 schools. And preliminary area of focus might be the war in Ukraine and fundraising for that, but the kids eventually decide once they're in the course. The pre-K curriculum, Don Savistano came and presented to us about their reviewing of the four state-approved pre-K curriculums. Looks like we're going to continue with the Creative Curriculum, it's called. It's an updated version of that, and that just includes, a newer version has family resources, four-week guided units, hard copy and digital access, and new content as it becomes available. So again, similar to what we had, but just a newer version of it. Parent Academy Calendar. I know Dr. Bavino has been very excited about the turnout thus far. At our, we've already had three parent academies at this point, and we've had some really terrific turnout, so thank you, that's been wonderful. The next one is November 2nd, Screenagers, which is more for Mawa High School students in Ramapo Ridge, and it's more of kind of a focus on safety issues. February 8th, there's Advanced Math and Gifted and Talented Programming for third-grade parents. March 5th, there is Supporting Each Student Emotionally Where They Are. And that's for all student levels. The other thing, we got an update from Dr. Fair on our mentoring program. So as required by the New Jersey Department of Education, any teacher who's working toward their teaching certificate is required to have one year of mentoring. So we have this year 15 mentors and 15 mentees assigned to each other based on content area, grade level, et cetera. So they've made some changes to the program under Dr. Fair's guidance and leadership. And so again, a good program to ensure that we support our new teachers and help address any issues so that we can, again, retain the best teachers in this district. And that's it. That's what I have for instruction curriculum. All right. Thank you very much. Let's go on to old, any, sorry, board member remarks, additional comments. Yep.
So on a poll we're third, John, Mike, and I attended the first meeting of the school year of the Bergen County School Boards Association. The guest speaker was Lester Taylor of the Taylor Law Firm, and his topic was parental rights in public education, specifically parental rights regarding curriculum and instruction, special ed, HIV, and student health and attendance. And his second topic was equity in education. The second meeting will be on December 5th. The topic for that night will be branding and communications, highlighting proactive engagement strategies to educate the public.
Excellent. Thank you for attending. Mr. De Silva?
Just real quick, I want to follow up on your comments on the marching band.
Yes.
So...
Did I misspeak?
Well, no, no.
Oh.
Yeah.
It just got better.
Oh, okay.
Correct. So they, yeah, they're in first place for the season so far. But this competition this past week was the second competition in a row that they not only won their division, but had the highest score of the show.
Wow. That was not on the Twitter feedback, so...
Continue with their scores are getting, are increasing as they go, so...
Well, just amazing. And thank you, Mr. De Silva, for further information on that. Thank you. And congratulations again to our marching band. I mean, it's just amazing. We have academic excellence, we have sports excellence, we have arts and, I mean, tremendous, tremendous stuff going on in our district. All right, any other board member remarks? All right, let's go on to old business. Minutes from September 27th meeting. I need a motion and a second. Mr. Hughes and a second by Mr. Gallo. Thank you. Mr. Bleeker.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Ms. Abenara.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Abstain. Mr. De Silva's here now.
Excuse me, Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let's take new business. I have A to G, G this evening. Okay, I need a motion. Mr. Kizmarsky and second by Dr. Park. Mr. Bleeker. We have full roll call this evening.
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Ms. Abenara.
Here, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes, and I'd like to recognize Z and AA. We have donations in the amount of $250 from the Tannen family and a $2,500 donation to the music program in Fernandino.
Thank you. Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, except on 20A, I'll be abstaining from checks 113103 and 113206.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
I am yes on all, except I, I am no. Only in that I still believe that Frost Valley should be a fall field trip. Liberty Science Center is not grade-worthy for grade five. So I'm...
Dr. Morthee.
And having gone on that trip in the spring, there's something to be said also for having it in the spring?
Yes.
I see, there's...
I feel the camaraderie that's developed in the fall throughout all six through eight.
So noted, Mr. Kizmarsky. All right, let's move on to new business personnel. Let's take A to JJ this evening. Need a motion, Mr. Denise, and a second by Mr. De Silva. All right, Mr. Bleeker?
Dr. Park.
Yes.
Ms. Sico.
Yes.
Ms. Abenara.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes, and I'd like to recognize and thank our volunteers in II and JJ, and also recognize G G and H H, is Bill Alati and Tegan Verratti, if I said that right, for representing Mawa in our independent rowing and fencing competitions.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarsky.
Yes.
And Dr. Morthee.
Yes. All right, let's move on to public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. All right, so I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes, and we are officially open to the public.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say thank you. After just looking at the test results, it's nice to see what you guys have done.
We just need a name.
Justin Jacob, sorry.
Yep, just the name. You can put the address down, that's fine, but just the name if you wouldn't mind, please.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, I just thank you for the work you've done, as seen with the test results. You have high standards for Mawa, and I appreciate that academically. That's why I moved here. However, I'm just afraid of the direction we're going to go in, particularly as DEI and SEL goes up. We've seen this all across the country, as you guys are aware. And in other school districts, academics have gone down as DEI and SEL have gone up. So I just want you guys to continue the hard work you're doing, stay with common sense, please, and I hope you're not pressured by any other groups. I know there's a few woke loud that are here, but please just stay with the common sense. I mean, I appreciate that, what you've been doing. So I love that my kids are growing, and I just hope that you can just continue to stay on course with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. George, right, correct, isn't it?
Jacob.
Jacob, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you said this, okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lou Theodore. I have a question about the eighth grade math and science, I've asked before, but it seems like there's a new, it seems like it's new, the iReady stuff. And then I have an eighth grade daughter who's in obviously math and science and concerned about specifically the sciences as a person of science. One of the targeted supports mentioned using iReady data, and the second one was providing instruction, targeted review of three areas of science. Is the review going to be part of class time, or is it an add-on to their actual science day? And can you speak to what the iReady is and how it'll help the...
And I'll turn it over to Dr. Dettore in just a minute, but I have been speaking about it in my instruction curriculum report. So just if you have gone, had, maybe go to a previous board meeting, but we'll let Dr. Dettore also clarify, I have talked about it because we rolled it out this year.
I'm going to ask you your second question. Let me answer the first one with iReady, and then I'm going to ask you again to repeat your second.
Sure.
So along the lines of the iReady, what I'm, I'm happy to share with you is, it's not just the math teachers, it's not just the ELA teachers that are looking at the data. As you know, being in the sciences, there's a lot of crossover skills that are needed in order to be successful in the sciences. So what we were able to do is create these data teams that our math and science teachers look at the scores and start to look at what are some of the skills that are deficient in our math scores that will definitely hold them back from being successful in science. So there's that conversation of what does it look like in the math department? And how can we parlay that into our science department? So really building up those skills so they can be ready to be successful there. There's the one piece. Along the lines of the second question...
Specifically, they mentioned a review, a generalized review. I took a picture of it, it was quick, but a generalized review respected to life, earth, and space and physical sciences. Right, structured and targeted review.
Got it.
Is that part of the curriculum that's already in place? Is it an add-on, is it in for school, or in...
And Dr. Bavino, please, please, you can just throw something at me if you may correct. That is more of a curricular review.
Okay.
So what, that is not something that's going to be taking place during instructional time. What they're looking at is currently the way that it's structured, they have the... What they're looking at is currently, the way that it's structured, they have the different sets of science throughout sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, as opposed to sixth grade science gets a sampling of all the sciences in sixth grade, then their seventh grade, then they build on that in the seventh grade. So what they're saying is it might take, what we're wondering is, because we have isolated science in sixth, let's say life science, I might, I might be wrong which one it is, and then a different science in seventh and a different science in eighth, because they're tested in all of the sciences each grade, they're, what's, what's more concerned about is that they're missing pieces in order to perform on this specific assessment. So they're looking at the curricular makeup of the programs and deciding what should be a proper adjustment long-term.
It's not just Mawa, clearly, because you do better than the state in almost every area, but it seems like eighth grade science is in crisis. Do you have a feeling for why that is statewide, not just in Mawa?
I, you know, I can't, you know, I can't speak, but I've sent this to you in previous meetings, even though we're above the state, I'm still not, I'm not satisfied with the scores at all.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, yeah.
But what I can tell you is, I know my expectation is that we do some serious work looking at the curricular side of it. You know, there's, if you go to other meetings, there's going to be people talking about the dynamics of the test, I'm not going to even entertain that conversation because it sounds like a cop-out.
I remember that, yeah.
But what I can tell you is, I think there's, there's opportunities for growth in all of the sciences, K through 12. I think there's opportunities at the K-5 level to build the base of understanding proficiency, I think, which was detailed in the, in the slides. You know, we have these opportunities of maker space and STEAM experiences that we can build in the scientific method and that experiential, experimental process, and build that language that can parlay year over year to, to really grow that proficiency. But there's opportunities for us to look at it as a holistic subject, K through 12, and work needs to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Theodore. Michelle Solzmann.
Congratulations first on your contract. I feel like we've been on a very long journey together over the years. My question is kind of broad. So we received numerous emails, and there's a lot of posts, and there's a lot of excitement over all the awards we win, and they are extensive at K through 12 in numerous different areas, and I'm always happy when I get them because I have kids in many different grades. My question is, and this is just maybe because I'm not privy to how metrics work, how do you, justify is the wrong word, but correlate that with our less-than-optimal NJSLA scores? What data points are used to determine we won something when we are clearly not doing so good in several core areas? What different data points and metrics are used?
I'm glad you asked that. So I know I just, on the last, the last answer, I said, we're not going to talk about the test dynamics, but what I will share with you is, a lot of these accomplishments are not based off of one assessment. And to be quite honest with you, a lot of them are national, international accomplishments, so they look at different, different categories or offerings. So some of them look at what is your course catalog, how is it made up? What are your AP offerings, and what are your AP scores? What are your SAT scores? They look at a number of different things, so we would go through those different things. So the International STEAM School of Excellence, that's one of them. I share with you some of the categories, and then also, that specific award talked about partnerships along the lines of the communities and things like that. So that's the one piece. The Future Ready Award that we won last year, that's something specific to what programs we're offering K through 12, what are the resources that we have, that we can provide to our students, and I don't have the criteria off the top of my head, but those are just some of the components. The singular test of NJSLA is not the indicator for these specific awards, and I'm happy to report, in a previous test presentation a couple weeks ago, the SAT scores, the ACT scores, all those high school achievement tests have gone, have significantly gone up, as well as AP offerings and AP averages, what Mr. Pascal shared in the past is, it's three is the passing. So we took a look at all of the courses that offer AP, and we were able to track year over year, and we were able to see the positive gains year over year for those AP courses.
Yes, I'm not disputing those scores and that.
No, 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 I mean...
I was just wondering how, when someone goes to ask that question, you say, these are our data points here, yet we won all of these things, and they just don't sometimes add up.
I understand.
Thank you for answering.
Thank you, Ms. Solzmann.
Those are great reports. It was great to see the numbers and see how well the school's doing. I have one comment, though, about the presentation about cohort analysis in math, doing comparison for the eighth grade and ninth grade. Since such a large number of your students are doing well and are taking the advanced math courses in seventh and eighth grade, they, they fall out of that sixth grade cohort. So when you start looking at the numbers, it looks like there's this massive falloff, and it's really because, truthfully, the top students, which are a sizable number, are coming out of the database. So when you present that data, there should be a secondary number in there, which is an actual student, the actual cohort of students, of where they were, and eliminate those students who are in seventh and eighth grade, that number, whatever that number is, their scores from the comparison cohort from the younger grade. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Just because that falloff, I could just, I saw the numbers, and I saw, I was really impressed with how many kids were taking the advanced math classes in seventh and eighth grade. So I think that that would make it a much clearer and much fairer comparison of how the kids are doing. You could keep the total, but you should have that other one, because it's really not, it's not a cohort, because you have a different group of students as part of it.
I understand.
On a secondary note, I had the benefit today of taking a class offered in, this is my other hat on for Mawa Pride, as a director of Mawa Pride, that we have a number of families in this district who have two mommies, or two daddies, or grandma, or various other family configurations at home. And I don't know what the policies are in Mawa for, says something as simple as paperwork. Do we have it listed as parent one, parent two, or guardian one, guardian two, or are we specifically saying mother and father?
On our, on our, our student, our student database, I believe it says parent one and parent two, I'd have to double check, but I'm almost positive that's what it is.
I don't, okay, great. I, I, because I don't know what the, the answer is. There are actually policies out there, there is a, more than 80% of kids surveyed, and this is another study that was specially done for families who are LGBT, where the, where the guardians, the parents are LGBTQ. And more than 80% of the kids surveyed, and this is aged 14 and up in high schools across the country, were coming up saying that they were bullied, that they were harassed by not only students, but also by teachers and faculty members, and they had various issues coming up when they brought up things that had to do with the fact that they did not come from a mom-dad family. So I just want to make sure, I just don't know where we are, so I'm not asking you to change anything, I just kind of want to understand where we are, what policies we may have to make sure that we have an equal playing field for the families, no matter what their situation may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steinberg. Good evening, good evening, everybody. Vicki Gallo, congratulations, Dr. Dittoro. Thank you for your leadership, thank you for all the work that our wonderful teachers and administrators do in Mawa. I've had the benefit of working as a substitute teacher for over 20 years, and I think there is an event happening tomorrow with ESS. I got a letter about it, so I just wanted to do a shout-out to the community, if anybody's interested in working as a substitute teacher. It's just been a great part-time job and, you know, great positive work environment. Love working with kids. And I just also wanted to thank Ms. Daveniero for pointing out that there is a great event coming up on October 24th called Be Smart for Gun Safety. It's going to be at the Mawa Senior Center, 7:00 p.m., and it talks about safe storage of weapons, so I just wanted to invite the community, invite all of you and parents and guardians to come and join in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallo, and you sound like me. All right. She's coming back.
I forgot to sign.
Oh, okay. All right, seeing no one else coming forward at this time, motion to close the meeting to the public, Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Hughes. We are going to, I need a motion to go to executive session, and we will adjourn from there. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. Everyone have a good night, thank you for coming this evening.